Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November 16, 2011, meeting of the Danbury Planning Commission. We'll open by calling the roll Mr. Keller.
Here.
Is he right?
Here.
Mr. Manuel is absent. Mr. Servinero?
Here.
The Soss better.
Here.
Most of the Maltese here. Um, Mr. Servinero, we sit at Mr. Manuel this evening.
I will.
Very much. Um, please note that we, um, we will not have, uh, two meetings in December. We will be having one meeting on December 7th, 2011, and then the meeting after that will be, uh, our first meeting in January.
The one we're gonna have is on Furlong Harbor Day?
Yes, yes, we are gonna have it. Anyway.
Furlong Harbor Day, yeah.
That's right.
Seven, seventy years this year. Seventy and a half years.
Okay. Uh, we will waive the acceptance of the minutes of the June 15th and July 7th meetings and move right to our first public hearing this evening, 7:30 PM. DXR Aviation Center Associate, Associate Application for Special Exception to Allow Aircraft Hangar Storage and Maintenance, DXR Aviation Center in the IL-40 Zone, Wallingford Road, G-18017, G-18018, Special Exception 718. Mr. Keller, would you read the legal notice, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission of the City of Danbury will hold public hearing commencing at 7:30 PM on November 16, 2011. In the city council chambers at City Hall, 155 Deer Hill Avenue, consider the following matter. DXR Aviation Center Associate's application for special exception to allow aircraft hangar storage and maintenance, DXR Aviation Center in the IL-40 Zone, Wallingford Road, lot numbers G-18017 and G-18018, Special Exception Number 718. Parties and interests and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application?
Oh, yes.
Well, can I do you?
That would be you. Yeah. There shouldn't be any.
That was good.
Good afternoon, sorry about that. Good evening, for the record, Benjamin Dotto, I'm here tonight representing the applicant DXR Aviation Center, also known as West County Aviation. It's the former Sandler Air Site on the end of Wallingford Road. The reason we're here for, uh, here tonight is because aircraft hangers are a special exception use in the IL-40 Zone. For those of you who are not actually familiar with the site, it's hard to see when you're driving up and down Myrie Brook Road, but through the vicinity map, it's tucked into the southeast quadrant of the, uh, the airport, uh, Amber Airport Runways, just off Myrie Brook Road, the end of Wallingford. Um, the, uh, the large topsoil material processing that goes on at the intersection there is what, if that were there, you'd see, um, this site right here. We're tucked in behind there. The proposal, the site, uh, contains 2.1 acres. Uh, it has, currently has three, uh, hangers, and the proposal is to do in addition, a 5,600 square foot addition to the central hangar, the long hangar number two. And the tan here for the three hangers, along the road, and the gravel parking area right here, proposal is to do an addition to that hangar right there. Um, in addition to the hangar addition, um, we are, uh, proposing to upgrade the parking, uh, driveways, and, uh, put a storm, stormwater management system in. The, um, variances were secured, uh, for this property for a couple of reasons. One, uh, in dealing with, uh, Paul Estefan at the airport, uh, he was adamant, as his commission notes, that, uh, he didn't want to do anything that was gonna attract birds to the property. So, we, we had a variance to eliminate, um, any of the planting requirements, trees, shrubs, bushes. Uh, we didn't ask to have land state violins eliminated, we're proposing land state violins on the plans, they're just gonna be planted in grass, that's all. Uh, and we also received a coverage variance going from 30 to 33 and a half percent. Um, and it has, again, to, to answer why, the site has 2.1 acres, but it functions as a lot larger site, because they have a lease parcel here that they use for tie-downs. The ZBA felt that was appropriate, uh, it doesn't count toward our square footage, but it's, but it's functional, um, and usable, airplanes are tied down. Aircraft hangar is a very low traffic count, uh, it's really not gonna change much from before. Um, the city requires that we have, uh, five parking spaces, we're gonna have about eighteen. Uh, the site is currently served by a well, sanitary sewer, that's gonna remain. Um, the main improvements that you're going to see, and we met with town staff prior to coming in, are along the front edge of the site. The, the existing site has one, two, three curb cuts, and it basically has gravel driveway that doesn't meet current stepback requirements. So, the, the, the edge of the gravel driveway, I'm tracing it with my finger here, is inside the front yard of stepback. Uh, we have a room, uh, pushing it back so we can meet all the dimensional requirements. We're closing these two curb cuts and improving the central, uh, curb cut, as part of the proposal. Uh, again, as part of the proposal, too, there's an existing sanitary sewer main that runs through the site. The easements were never rented to the city, uh, by the previous owner, and that's something that's, is gonna be done in the city engineering department as well. The, um, we're also here tonight for a floodplain permit. Uh, not necessarily gonna be act on tonight, but the entire site is in the Hunter Ear floodplain with a, with a, uh, with the exception of a little limit here along Mr. Sayers' property there, uh, to, to, to the south. Uh, all three buildings are in the Hunter Ear floodplain, as is the majority of the airport, the taxiways, et cetera. Uh, we're simply, proposed garage, uh, hangar addition is going to be set at a finished floor equal to the existing one. It's gonna be below the Hunter Ear floodplain, it's gonna be designed accordingly, designed flood. Um, we did a cut and fill, I did a cut and fill analysis as part of the overall, uh, design, and there's gonna be a net reduction, um, reduction in fills in addition and flood storage, not much, by about 26 cubic yards, and that's shown on the rating utility point. Uh, we've also filed an application with the FAA, uh, the Form 7460-1, which is basically to the FAA to determine any obstructions, uh, both X, Y, and Z, uh, from their paths. We feel comfortable with that, it's not gonna be a problem, we had previously submitted one about a year ago, plans changed, uh, we resubmitted with this different configuration here. Uh, we've received comments from city staff, and the comments are pretty straightforward. Uh, just yesterday, Paul Estefan signed off on it, uh, the airport administrator, um, he's aware of everything we've been doing, worked with him during, during the ZBA process as well. Jen's made of the requirement that, uh, the lots need to be combined, I think they need to be combined by, by, as part of a coverage requirement. Abdul, uh, just wants no parking signs put on the road, because how narrow the road is, uh, it shouldn't be a big deal, could put a couple of those in. Engineering Department had a couple of standard comments relative to showing larger sewer services, as I said, they're all existing, we just have to locate them and control them on the plans, and then as far as some information about getting that easement filed, uh, with the sewer. The building department had a comment as to, um, that the handicap accessible path crosses gravel, and they just read the plan wrong. Um, there, there is some gravel shown on there, but it's existing gravel, the driveway is all going to be asphalt, but we can sit that, sit down and work that out with the building department, it's not a big deal, and the highway department is fine with the plans as well. Uh, again, as part of closing these driveways and improving the existing one, putting the curving, new sidewalks along the entire runway. Um, is there anything you need to add, Chris, or relative to the site? Oh, again, I'm sorry, with me tonight is, uh, Chris Orpisi, he's the owner of, uh, DXR.
Yeah, the only thing that, since I-
You have to, I'd like to see your name, a affiliation for the record, if you would.
Uh, Chris Orpisi. The variance we're going for is, uh-
No, Chris, we're not here for variance.
But we said earlier about, um, the IL-40, this is a different use, but just something you need to understand, the city has a restriction on the property that it cannot, it can only be used for aviation purposes, so.
Okay.
You know, it's not like if you're looking at, say, you could do something else there, why are you doing this? We, we have a D restriction in the city, so this is the only thing, this is the only kind of use we can, so I just wanted to-
Yeah. No, no problem at all, did you get his last name, Jordan?
Um, of course.
Spell that.
O-R-I.
Uh-huh.
F-L-A-C-R.
Uh-huh.
I did pretty good.
Yeah, and that was, actually, to, I forgot, I did forget to mention that. Um, we still have to come here, because it's still a special exception use, but it's the only use we could do with the property, because there is a D restriction.
Questions, can I ask?
Any, do we need to get, here are any comments from the airport administrator on this?
Mr. Chairman, we received a comment, well, we received an approval from, um, Paul Estefan yesterday. Uh, I knew this submitted from DXR Aviation and offer no objections to the project.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, that's okay, um, just, everyone's clear on that D restriction?
Yes.
That's a little strange, but, uh, we have a choice.
Right. Yes. A question, sir, would you go with the same position, Mr. Chairman? Thank you, Ben.
Okay.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone else in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application, Mr. Servinero?
For those of you who don't know, we are all Sayers.
Mr. Sayers, of course we know you.
I say Y, E-R-S.
I touched that, thank you.
Uh, I'm in favor, it is a pleasure to have some good neighbors for a change, real nice people, and they're, what they're doing is just fine, I don't think it's a problem or anything, but the only thing I can see of the problem right now is that we get Mr. Estefan to clean the dirt. Because the beaver had built dams underneath Myrie Brook Road, and by tomorrow morning, if we get any more rain, the water will be back across Myrie Brook Road again. We have a four-foot-high, eight-foot-wide tile underneath the end of the runway that passes over from, uh, the house, the property I had at 25 over to the old Bluebird, which is now Kurt's Air. Out of the four-foot-high tile, you only have six inches of pipe showing. It's eight-foot wide, it's full mud, it's backing up the water on B, on Mr. Miller, next door, onto Mr. Batista's property, and also into Foley to a degree. Right, it really needs to be tended to-
That's an airport issue? That's, uh, that's the airport's responsibility, something?
Well, this-
No, I know what that guy's saying. Beaver responsible, but- Okay.
But, uh, at the same time, I don't understand the point other than defoliating the valley going down, but that's been accomplished, all the trees are dead all the way down through. They're really, but, uh, I don't wanna see him get flooded, because what happens is, once it gets up just so high, then it all comes through all at once. So, it's, it's just something that needs to be taken care of all the way around, it's not only there, but all the way down, when we did the runway from east to west, right? Um, yeah. Uh, Steve Garrity had the job, Boarders of Shaw, and all during the time that we were repaving that runway, digging it up and redoing it, right, like we're doing in front of this place now, they left the beaver dam down behind the, um, Sports Authority until the job was over. And I mean, all they did was cause more trouble, more chaos, because the water kept coming up, then they had to dig up more and more, and replace it, it's, you know, it just has to be kept clean and maintained. So, other than that, uh, they're nice people, no problem, I've had some dealings, everything has been good, right, and it'll work out good, in fact, I'll probably hit down the old house.
No kidding.
Not, oh, yeah, well, my, you, you see the house my daughter has on Spruce Mountain? I guess we're not gonna move that house up to Hilton. That's over. Maybe the city did me a favor in 91, and blocked me there, and my lawyer blocked us up. But anyways, this is all good.
All right, well, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
I've seen the beavers. Have you seen the beavers, Mr. Servinero? Seriously. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone else in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application?
There's a beaver here, they told me.
I think, then I'm alive.
If it were in our purview, Mr. Chairman, I would make the requirement to, uh, we leave a beaver dam so it wouldn't flood community property.
No, this is, we're not here to flood, we're here to prevent the flood, so, uh, since we should, but you know, it's an accident.
Mr. Chairman, I'll mention it to Mr. Estefan tomorrow, I'm sure he's quite aware of it.
You know, Jen, um, we're not really waiting on anything, we, we've heard from everybody.
No, we're not. We have all comments, and, uh, the only, uh, comment that I had in my staff report was a note that had to do with a lot combination that can, um, be handled after the buck.
Is that what you meant?
Yeah, my, some minor notes from engineering, uh, but nothing of substance.
Commission members, anything else, uh, you wanna hear or talk about on this particular application?
As long as there's no outstanding issues of substance, I, I, this is pretty straightforward. I, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing, and in a second motion, move it to Old Business for Fast Action.
Okay, first motion is to close the public hearing, do I hear a second?
No.
Is there any further discussion? There are none, try your minds, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, the public hearing is closed, and on the second motion, which is to move it to, um-
Old Business.
Old Business, number one, but her second, Ellen, second on that. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, the matter of DXR will be moved to our Old Business Agenda under item one, thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Okay, we'll move right over to, uh, item two, DRS Technologies Inc., application with special exception to allow use, DRS Consolidated Controls Facility Expansion, generating over 500 vehicle trips per day in the IL-40 Zone, 19-21 South Street, K-15080 and K-15081, Special Exception 719. Mr. Keller, would you read that legal notice, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission of the City of Danbury will hold a public hearing commencing at 7:50 PM on November 16, 2011, in the city council chambers at City Hall, 155 Deer Hill Avenue, consider the following matter. DRS Technologies Inc. Incorporated, application for special exception to allow use, DRS Consolidated Controls Facility Expansion, generating over 500 vehicle trips per day in the IL-40 Zone, 19-21 South Street, lot numbers K-15080 and lot number K-15081, Special Exception Number 719. Parties and interest and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Commission members, hopefully you've received the, uh, the information that Jennifer has, um, distributed on this matter. We have a staff report dated November 15, uh, we have a report, uh, to Dennis from Engineering, it looks like, also dated November 15. Um, Jennifer did email, you might, you might email us, uh, earlier today, comments from Abdul Mohammed, our traffic engineer, and also there is a traffic impact study that was previously submitted, um, dated October of 2011. And finally, Jennifer just did hand out an additional, uh, I guess it's the Exhibit A, as it was distributed this evening.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, we have these on file, so there's no need to-
The exhibit, okay. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? Sir?
Hello, I'm Jerry Day, and I am the president of DeLar Associates, and, uh, we're acting as agent for DRS Technologies Inc. and, uh, the application this evening. Before starting the presentation, there's one thing that I always like to do, and that is to thank the commission for taking the time to, um, listen to what we have to say. We appreciate that this is, uh, taking your personal time, and, uh, I think it's really a thank you. Also, I wanna thank Jennifer, we appreciate the free, I mean, we had, it started two years ago now, by the way.
We did.
So, and also, um, uh, thank the recent staff comments, uh, they helped us get another, uh, look at, at what we've done, so, um, we've been very helpful. By way of introduction, my company is a real estate development business with a long list of trophy projects, uh, including office buildings, golf courses, homes, university facilities, and a few. Uh, we're proud of the work we do, uh, but for us, projects, regardless of their type, uh, gain their trophy status by being important to the communities in which they're included and built. And I think when we go through this proposal, uh, I think, or I hope you guys and ladies would share our view that this project rises to that, um, to that measure. Uh, to understand this, I'm gonna take everybody back three years, when we first learned about DRS's need to consolidate, um, their operations. Here was a company that had successfully gone about its business in Danbury for over 50 years, uh, since 1958. Uh, they've been on South Street since the early 80s, designing and building machinery control and safety systems for the US Navy and, uh, nuclear, uh, plants. Uh, and through a series of acquisitions, uh, it first became part of Eaton Corporation, then DRS Technologies, uh, and now, uh, then, uh, Canica. Uh, its operations have outgrown its aging facility, uh, which had been built in three stages, and it's, it's amazing to realize that the last stage that building was built 40 years ago. So, you can tell it's, uh, has been there for a while. Um, in the meantime, here was a company that had about 300 high-tech employees in Connecticut suddenly looking for an acceptable home, uh, and, uh, and they would require a 170% increase in the space that's under one roof on, uh, on the South Street. And, uh, as we all know, from a, uh, business perspective and from a governmental perspective, questions like this don't always end up with a good answer, so, um, uh, as a lifelong resident of Connecticut, uh, I was immediately drawn to this client, uh, and, and to the cause of showing them a way to renew their commitment to Connecticut, and to renew their commitment to Danbury and to this, uh, aging facility. I would have thought it a absolute tragedy to, uh, lose a, such a great portrait citizen as DRS has been for the duration that they've been here. Uh, but, uh, once we started on this venture, we, uh, soon learned that the degree of difficulty was increasing, uh, and not decreasing, as we understood more about the South Street site, uh, we became more familiar with its constraints, uh, and, uh, very quickly began to understand that doing a perfect land plan was gonna be impossible. Uh, and we, uh, began to understand that making improvements would be both difficult and inexpensive to do. But, uh, to DRS's threat, uh, they resisted the obvious temptation to move on, and they really dug in to try and figure out, was there, was there an, an answer to this, to this puzzle, uh, that could, uh, preserve their residency here? Uh, and what we're gonna show you tonight, uh, is a proposal that survives the feasibility test. Uh, it makes no claim to being an ideal, uh, land plan in every aspect, uh, and the reason for that is that we didn't start with an easy or an undeveloped site. Uh, we hope that after a follow-up thoughtful review, that this board will find the plan to be responsive and an optimal solution when taken as a whole. Uh, and I guess most importantly, I hope, going back to the, where I started talking, that, uh, you will feel, as I do, about the trophy aspects of this project and, uh, DRS's , uh, quote, "citizen of Danbury." Um, at this point in time, what I'd like to do is introduce the, the project team. Uh, we've got some, um, well, I'll set it up, we've got some great people here.
It's a good intro.
It's a good intro. We start off with, uh, our land use attorney is Harry Heller, he's a partner with Heller Heller McCoy. I've worked with Harry on numerous projects, uh, and we're forward to working on many more with him. Uh, Joe Lanahan, uh, is the, um, professional engineer with Fosun O'Neil, Mark Vertucci with Fosun O'Neil, uh, Traffic. Uh, and we have, uh, Mark Fernandez, who's a partner with, uh, Ate Architecture, where we're gonna go through some of this. And we also have, whom won't be speaking tonight, Al Dumont, uh, from DRS, so, uh, we have a good group here. But with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Harry Heller.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Harry Heller, and I'm an attorney with an office at 736 Route 32 in Upusville.
I'll see the casino, right?
Two miles from the casino.
Nothing to depend on.
Well, I'm just down Route 32 from the casino, actually. Um, as Jerry indicated, uh, the DRS site is a developed industrial site, and we're proposing the redevelopment of that site in order to meet the expansion needs, um, of an industrial citizen of your community, uh, to keep these tech jobs in Danbury and in the state of Connecticut. As the staff report indicates, the property is located in the IL-40 zoning district. Uh, its address is 19 and 21 to 29 South Street. It's actually two parcels of property. 21 to 29 South Street accommodates the existing DRS facility. Uh, 19 South Street is further to the south, and is currently improved, we have an existing condition, I'm trying to see, it's currently improved, well, actually, if you can see it, on the aerial, with a single-family residence. In conjunction with this application, we are proposing to combine those two parcels into one track. Uh, we've provided as part of the application, strong and use, which will accomplish that combination, and if approved by all of the appropriate permitting authorities, um, this property future will function as one integrated parcel, with the single-family dwelling house being removed as part of the construction process. At the completion of improvements, we're proposing to keep the house, uh, as a construction site, um, for staging during construction, and then, on the completion of improvements, the new house will be removed, uh, prior to issuance of any, you know, recent compliance and such.
Mr. Keller, questions?
Is there someone living in that residence?
I do not believe there is, is there? No. No, is there someone living in that residence now? No.
Thank you. Are you raised a question?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, is that where the Stone Wars is? Is that down there?
No, it's down far.
No.
You think it's a base monument?
Yeah. No. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The DRS use, uh, which is really three uses, all of which are uses permitted by right in the RL and the IL-40 zoning district, um, is electronic manufacturing, which is cited in the Stanford report, uh, but there is also an associated office component, and DRS conducts research and development also at this facility. So, all of those uses are uses permitted by right in the RL 40 zoning district. Uh, the reason that a special exception is required from your commission is because this project is a high-traffic generator. And when we say that it's a high-traffic generator, under Section 3E2 of your regulations, um, anything that generates over 500 vehicle trips per day for all uses on the site, uh, requires special exception with your vital planning commission as a high-traffic generator. We're not creating 500 new trips, but the overall trip generation from the existing facility, which as far as we could determine through all discussions with staff, never had traffic review, uh, from the city, is having traffic review now, as a result of the increased traffic, which will result from the consolidation of DRS operations at the South Street site and the addition of, uh-
Thirty employees now? Thirty-six employees?
At Shelter Rock?
Yeah.
There'll be, probably about 50 here.
Fifty that'll be moving over. Some additional 50 employees will be moving from the Shelter Rock location to the South Street location. In order to satisfy the requirements of your zoning regulations, um, there are a number of different provisions of the zoning regulations that are applicable to this use and must be considered by your commission in evaluating the proposal. Um, you have the Table of Bulk Regulations contained in Section 6A3 of the zoning regulations. Uh, we submit to you that the use complies with the bulk regulations. The combined site is about a little over 10 acres, um, we meet the coverage requirements, all the set-back requirements, uh, the- We meet the coverage requirements, all the setback requirements, the minimum lot acreage, obviously, which is forty thousand square feet. There are no specific use regulations for this facility under Section six A four of the zoning ordinance. There are performance standards in Section six C one B, which are also performance standards for general, for special exception uses contained in Section ten C four. The use must be in compliance with all applicable zoning regulations, that it will not emit noise, smoke, glare, odor or vibration or other conditions which will create nuisance having a detrimental effect on adjacent properties. Now, the manufacturing component of the facility will not change in nature and will not be expanded. The expansion will free up space in the addition, in the existing facility by moving the office component that is currently at South Street into the new space and will create additional manufacturing space and research and development space, but the inherent nature of the use will not change at all as a result of this expansion. The use will be designed in a manner which is compatible with the character of the neighborhood. In order to address neighborhood compatibility, as Jerry indicated, we have Mark Fernandez from Ate Architecture with us this evening, who will go over the design of the proposed addition and show how it integrates with the existing neighborhood, which is kind of a mixed neighborhood. We have a mix of residential and light industrial uses in this area. And the proposal must not create conditions harmful to the national, natural environment or which will jeopardize public health and safety. In conjunction with this application, we are proposing to alter a water course that runs through the property and to fill approximately fourteen thousand square feet of in the wetlands. We have an application pending before your Environmental Impact Commission, which will be scheduled for public hearing on December fourteenth. In conjunction with that application and to address the impact, the design engineers have incorporated mitigation of about forty thousand square feet of created wetlands. So we have almost a three-to-one ratio of mitigation for disturbance. In addition, there is a large wetland system which is located between the parking lot and the railroad tracks which are behind the property. And that wetland system is invested with invasive species, particularly fragmites. So as part of the mitigation, we're also incorporating an invasive species mitigation plan for that area. We can get into more detail on that if you want, although I think there are issues that are really more germane to the Environmental Impact Commission. One thing that may be germane to your commission, which was raised in the staff report, is the fact that there is an environmental land use restriction on this property. And it's on, interestingly enough, it's on the property at nineteen South Street, not the industrial site. But there was an environmental site assessment performed on that property and there was spillage from two underground fuel storage tanks on the property that resulted in the negotiation of the environmental land use restriction with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. The environmental land use restriction restricts the use of the property to non-residential uses because the level of pollution exceeds the action criteria for residential use but does not exceed it for commercial or industrial use. In conjunction with the site improvements which are proposed for the property at nineteen South Street, we are coordinating discussions with the environmental consultants who perform the environmental site assessment in order to ensure that our development activities are conducted in such a manner that they will not result in any migration of pollutants around that site. And what we are proposing is that through the public hearing process, we will introduce into the record of this proceeding an evaluation from the environmental engineers demonstrating consistency of our proposal with the conditions as they exist on the site. And finally, and perhaps most importantly, as your evaluation criteria apply to this application, we must demonstrate to you that the use will not create conditions adversely affecting traffic safety or which will cause undue traffic congestion. In conjunction with this application, we've had a traffic impact analysis prepared by Fussin O'Neil as required by your regulations, was submitted with the application, and Mark Bertucci from Fussin O'Neil will be making a presentation to your commission this evening with respect to traffic. Now, as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, and right into the record, you've received a number of comments from Jennifer for staff report and from the consulting agencies of the town of Danbury. We also have received those reports, a number of which were just received yesterday and today. So we're not in a position to comprehensively address those this evening. Because of the permitting before the Environmental Impact Commission, obviously, your commission cannot conclude the public hearing this evening. As you announced, your next meeting is December seventh. I think what would make most sense at the end of the proceedings this evening is if you could continue the public hearing to your January meeting. We'll provide you with an extension of the statutory time period. That'll give us time to get before the Environmental Impact Commission had all the public hearing, work with staff to try to resolve a number of the review comments that we have received, most of which are addressable. But there are a few comments that I'd like to just discuss briefly with the commission this evening to get them on the table. Joe Lenahan will go into great detail as to the physical constraints that this site imposes on trying to satisfy some of these requirements. And hopefully, we can work in a collaborative effort to try to find some solutions and come up with a product that's good for the town of Danbury and also is good for DRS Technologies. The traffic comments identify the fact that there are some sightline constraints, identify the traffic impact analysis from the proposed south side driveway to the south. Joe Lenahan is going to make a presentation to you this evening as to how we have formulated a response and intend to address that. I think we have a, a solution to those issues. In the, several of the comments that we have received, there is a request that the applicant consider installing sidewalks along its frontage on South Street. And there are some very significant physical constraints to the installation of sidewalks that we need to discuss and get some direction on this evening from the commission. And we'll have Joe review those and the engineering constraints and the site constraints that exist in trying to accommodate that request. And dealing with the same constraints, we must deal with the requirement contained in the landscaping section of your regulations for the industrial site. There we have a twenty-foot landscape script along our frontage on South Street and how we might be able to reconcile that requirement with the potential sightline constraints that putting in a landscape strip, certainly with trees, would create. Obviously, we can do something with low-growing shrubs to make it attractive, but we need some discussion on that point as to whether or not that you feel that that will satisfy the intent of the regulations. So those are the permitting parameters and some of the issues that we think are potentially problematic to DRS to address from the review comments that we've received to date. With that, I'd like to address, introduce Joseph Lenahan to the commission. Joseph is our design civil engineer for the project, responsible for the development of the site plan. He'll take you through the site plan and he can talk in more detail concerning the issues with respect to both the sidewalks and the landscaping.
Questions for Attorney Heller, can you shoot them to me, please?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Joseph Lenahan, third, professional engineer, licensed in the state of Connecticut, worked for Fussin O'Neil located at fifty-six Cory Road, Trumbull, Connecticut. Good evening, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, of the hearing. I'd like to introduce you basically a kind of a step through of what we have gone through with this. Specifically, as you can see, we had a number of constraints with this site. If you're familiar with this site, it's basically in a bowl. And because of that, Route fifty-three to the west is approximately thirteen feet above the facility itself. And because of that, there's substantial sloping downward and then to the east side we have the constraint of the wetlands itself. Going through multiple iterations, I was determined that the best location to expand this facility would be on the south side. The north side, we are right up against our original property. The east side, we have the wetlands and we have railroad tracks. And the southern side, in combination of Lot nineteen, is our best bet. The only issue that we had at that point in time is the state of Connecticut and Route fifty-three drainage connection actually drains down to the south side of our facility and then crosses on our parking line, drains into a larger wetland area down to the east side. So we determined, well, best step is actually to take this, this wetland area that's primarily fed from two sources, one being South Street drainage structure and the other there is groundwater bleeding out that is coming off on the east side of fifty-three. With the expansion of the building on the south side, if we push forward, now unfortunately, with the building at thirteen feet below grade, as we actually go south, Route fifty-three rises up. So several more feet, however, the impact of that, it actually creates more vulnerability in this area and then it's a little bit more difficult to get to the point where we have to grade in this part of the site and then still maintain some fluidity of traffic entrance, parking, ADA compliance, so on and so forth. As you can see from the elevation, this is more or less going to be our, our front entrance. This new front entrance is going to be primarily where the security guard is, all access control, deliveries from UPS, FedEx, et cetera. Currently, those come in through the north driveway and enter into this north end. This new layout is going to create a sense of arrival as you come in. Coming through, visitors, deliveries will be coming in through this front entrance and directed right to the security area. The remaining staff will have actually two options, coming in from the north side and/or the south side. Previously, with the plans in front of you, you will note that the southern drive was originally proposed to be a full access, exit, ingress and egress. Unfortunately, due to specific substantial sightline issues, we are proposing now that the southern entrance would be solely into the site. This kind of helps a lot, especially with the sightline conditions. As we head south on Route fifty-three, there are four parcels there. There's other units. Mr. Bertucci, our traffic engineer, will get a little more detail into that, just in case you see there's a little bit of a difference between what I'm presenting you in front of you and what you have in front of you. Another comment is the fact that our existing drive is right up the parking lot. And speaking with the traffic engineer, the recommendation was to increase the width of the drive to twenty-six feet and then also increase the turn, the radiusance to twenty-five. We had so done that in order to create a better entrance for the trucks and also for exit trucks. Sightline distances at the northern exit is substantially greater than the south. When it comes to grading out the site, especially in these areas, where we configured as part of the northern driveway, you basically have a two to three percent landing area and then drops to around six to seven percent or meets back up into the existing parking area. Reconfiguration of this area currently is going to be a little bit phased between, obviously, construction when we come through utilizing the fact this has to be done first before we get to the point of completely building out the southern side. On the southern access, we're maintaining twenty-four foot access routes currently. That is larger than what is actually required for, for the ingress. However, it does allow people coming in from fifteens and from fifty-three, south and north, to make the mark without a problem. There is a restriction at this location where our driveway is. There's an existing utility pole and a hydrant. And we actually forced our driveway to be between those. Unfortunately, if we brought it any further to the north to originally increase our sight, sight distances, we have severe gradient acts. This access drive comes in basically as you enter into the site at about eleven percent grade and then decreases as you come down the wall. Primarily, we had to reach the existing finish floor elevation of this building.
Just a question, did you expect all deliveries for this manufacturing facility are going to be, trying to come in through the new addition, through the new W B five area? All deliveries?
Only deliveries for FedEx, UPS, small trucks, all of the existing, which will be also proposed, Maxim W B fifty size trucks will be used in the north entrance. As part of the reconfiguration and the expansion of this facility, part of it was to pipe the twenty-four inch RCP that comes from South Street and the state drainage system, currently goes through our, our expansion location. We're going to be piping that completely around the facility to the south side and then discharge at its current location into the wetland area. The whole intent was to completely isolate this storm drainage system from the rest of it. Primarily, this is the state highway drainage. We didn't want to basically, let's say, muddy the waters with any of our proposed development, especially when it came into the fact that with our proposed development, we are collecting the runoff itself going through our, our retention slash water polishing basin prior to the discharge into our forty thousand square foot mitigation area. Another aspect of part of the storm drainage that we incorporated is the fact that currently the existing facility, the roof drains are actually split between the north section, which discharges into a storm system and then discharges into the wetland area down to the east side. Compared to the southern part of the structure, actually discharges through a twelve-inch PVC pipe that currently has a candy cane configuration over this location here, primarily because of the fact that with the state drainage system coming into this area, it at times can induce that and they've had some water backup problems into the facility. To solve that issue, we have separated the storm water from the roof completely away from that system so that we're not going to run into any chance of any having any backup coming in June from the discharge location to the east side. As part of our mitigation area, it's not as shown, but this is actually the whole wetland area. This is the forty thousand square feet of mitigation we're proposing. Besides the biopitration detention system that's actually going to be, you know, feeding that in order to maintain and sustain those wetland areas, we do actually have active bleed out of groundwater in those locations. We are proposing curtain drains and underdrains for retaining walls on the side and of this western slope in order to capture that and actually continually feed into it. Currently, there's some other areas of bleed out that, when you conduct your sight walk, you'll see that's coming from, there's a Batumis access way that comes across. see that's coming from, there's a Batumus access way that comes across. All utilities for the expansion will be a new supply. We're going to have new domestic water service, a new fire suppression service coming off of 53. We're going to have a new gas service coming up of 53. We were going to be having a sanitary force main pump system from this facility and that is actually going to connect into the existing gravity sanitary mail that is currently right up the western edge of the site. You don't see electrical service on this plan primarily because of the fact that the existing electrical service coming into their set down station is actually going to be powering our expansion. And that service itself is going to be running through the existing facility over to them. That was one of the comments to show electrical service and we'll, we'll note the fact that that's going to be there. As part of additional accessways, just for general knowledge, the, the current site itself has approximately 248 parking spaces. Currently, there's around 273 employees that use this, use the facility. So there's a substantial amount of overflow when it comes to how this site is just packed. And we're actually proposing 317 parking spaces, which is only three parking spaces over the requirement through 14. Of the 317 parking spaces, we're including nine handicap stalls, of which eight are required for the 317. We're providing those locations. Some are actually still existing locations that they have. We did relocate some places. We had some existing handicap spaces at this location. We had problem closer to the front entrance. All of our sidewalks are, will be compliant, maximum five percent grade with the sidewalks and the ramps will be good as well. The next point of discussion will involve the construction process and how we're going to be able to handle sediment erosion control. Obviously, in areas in a bowl and just the wetlands, that's a large concern. Part of our construction sequence prior to reconstructing the north entrance first in order to make that a dedicated entrance and exit while during construction on the south side, it's not shown in this plan. Apologize for that, we just made that last thing the change due to staff comments today. After the north entrance is constructed, we will actually then pipe the Route 53 storm drainage. We'll completely run our new storm system down through to completely isolate that area. We need to do that in order to ensure the fact that our construction area is protected, especially if we have any flash floodings like we had this past season. As we go through, silt fencing, hay bales will be utilized, silt sacks with all the catch basins that are currently on site, including also an up gradient runoff we're going to control in order to minimize its impact on our site itself. We will be utilizing settling pumps, basins due to high groundwater, we'll be having to pump out the foundation systems. We also use a major sediment to collect any of that runoff prior to discharging into the wetlands. As part of, part of the, the application, we identify the fact that we're doing biweekly inspections and then also per the Connecticut DEP guidelines. There's also a requirement for inspections to occur after one tenth of an inch of rainfall. That would be occurring continuously. There'll be areas of stockpile that require, it will also be silt fencing controlled. In addition, the existing house on 19th South Street that we use as the construction office, basically. In addition, going through all the slopes that are over three or one or steeper, we'll have erosion control matting. In addition, we are proposing two retaining walls, primarily just to, to meet the grade of the parking lot. The last thing we want to do is have a parking lot that's over five percent where the doors open up and slam into the next person and/or come down and close upon you. We'll have a maximum two-foot retaining wall with a curtain drain along the west side of the southerly parking lot is proposed. And in addition, we have a proposed retaining wall at the intersection of Wickst Avenue that's currently proposed at three feet. However, we're entertaining new ideas to that the Connecticut DOT has some issues with this retaining wall, this location. Unfortunately, at this specific location, you can see that the right of way actually widens out substantially coming onto our property. With that and with the setbacks that are along the frontage, we're approximately 1.7 feet away at that corner of the building. If you have the opportunity to go out into the field as a request from the environmental and环保 commission, we did go out and stake out the main corners of the facility. We basically have this corner, this corner, and then the front entrance staked out in the field. And in addition, you'll also notice it stakes out in this field here of where our mitigation area is, primarily extending through up to this side of the house and as you can see from this, this view. Lastly, I'd like to discuss Route 53 improvements that we're proposing. There is currently existing bus stops over at the northern drive. Currently, the, both bus stops are just bare ground. There, there is no standing area for any citizens that are getting on and off the bus. We are proposing, besides the requested concrete evans at our curb paths, also an extension with a handicap ramp along our property frontage for this bus stop specifically, this quick up. The, the request to place sidewalks along our frontage for the entire side of the site has several issues to deal with. One of the issues is currently, we have about a three and one percent grade coming from the, if you're actually looking northbound on 53 down to our site, that's one issue that we have. The request is to put a three-foot snowshoe and then a five-foot walk from the edge of the road. There's eight feet coming off that actually brings you to about the edge of this, this mobile line. Substantial grading acts at that location where we have to then regrade and most likely replant these shrubs as well in order to get that sidewalk canal location. Another issue that we have is when you come closer to, for the sharp right of way to actually see the grades as they drop off. Within these pictures, there's these utility poles that are basically right on the edge of the road throughout the entire length of our property. These aren't just ancillary power lines that carry domestic service. They're actually high-power tension lines. There are several, several poles have transformers on, they're high tension above that. In addition to that, there's also verified optic cable that runs along this strip as well. One more role that we have, that would impact the sidewalk consolidation. Another thing, and lastly, is the fact that there's really no pedestrian connection between from the south to the north in this area. As stated previously, it is more of an industrial, commercial, residential mixed use. There's actually areas where, as we look further north in this location through these houses, you really can't, there's not that connection coming down through there. Just south of us, there's a chiropractor and a flooring enterprise.
Mr. Keller, question?
On either side of this, of this property, are there currently sidewalks?
Not in front of this, this area.
No, but I think, I mean, once you get past either to the north or the south, are there sidewalks, once you get on either side of this property?
The closest that we had is closer towards Shelter Rock Road where Party City is.
So there wouldn't, so there wouldn't be any sidewalks on any adjacent properties right now that would connect to a sidewalk to input there?
That's correct.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ures, go ahead.
What's between the party bar and whatever is called now and your property?
There is industrial facility. Actually, I'll show you.
Preferred utilities.
Preferred utilities, that's all.
Preferred utilities, there's the gravestone or?
No, no, it's in between Party Depot and that, yeah.
It sells monuments?
Oh, that's that too.
Yes, that, that's right, that's running between, for utilities as well. This is actually, you do better description of, I've actually put it out here. We have basically our property and adjoining residential units. There's no sidewalks on either side of Connecticut either or.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Mr. Mark Fortucci, our traffic engineer. Questions for Commissioner Miller, anything else? Helen, go ahead.
One of the staff comments was about removing trees that are adjacent properties. Do you see any issues with that? I mean, you had discussions with the adjacent properties and did you have any agreement?
Actually, that would be solely in effect if this was to be maintained as an egress. The southern driveway, the original sightline distances heading south, these four parcels there were, that's where the chiropractors and the flooring, their signage, their, their trees which are on their property would have impacted that. But since then, we have revised our site design and now this is entrance only. So therefore, we could completely eliminate that issue. There's also comments regarding some landscaping even on the site here. Our client had within, I'd say, the past year, maybe two planted several pine trees for screening of their southerly neighborhood.
Mr. Ures, question?
Maybe, question for staff, are there floodplain issues here? I know there are wetlands issues, that's not our concern, but?
No, it is not in floodplain, it's not in the regulations area.
We are on floodplain, flood shaded X in this location. Thank you.
Thank you, good evening, I'm Mark Fortucci, I'm a senior transportation engineer at Foston O'Neill, I'm also a registered professional engineer in Connecticut and a registered professional traffic operations engineer as well. Here tonight to just present briefly the findings of our traffic impact study for the proposed expansion. Just orienting the site a little bit more regionally, the northerly site drive here is located about 900 feet south of the Shelter Rock Road intersection. Southerly drive is another 650 feet off to the south of that, in the vicinity of Wicksted Avenue. We did conduct, as part of the traffic study, turning movement counts at the intersection of South Street and Shelter Rock Road. We also counted each of the two existing driveway locations. While we also counted each of the existing driveway locations to give a sense of what the existing trip generation rate for employee currently is. We did an automatic traffic recorder count on South Street to determine 24-hour traffic volume and vehicle speeds. And these traffic counts reveal that the peak hours out there on South Street are 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning and 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock in the afternoon. The existing site generates about 93 trips in the morning and 104 trips in the afternoon peak hour. And with 273 employees, that works out to a rate of about one trip for every three employees. I do expect most of the traffic coming from the north currently uses the northerly site driveway and most from the south comes in and exits to the, from the south driveway. Now, to, to assess our future traffic condition, the 2012 design year, we grew these traffic counts by one and a half percent to account for normal traffic growth in the study area. In the proposed conditions, again, we're relocating up to 50 employees from the Shelter Rock Road office. So in order to, the additional traffic associated with that, with that office move, we utilize the existing empirical data that I just described. And using that rate, the additional employees would generate only 14 new trips in the morning peak hour and 16 new trips in the afternoon peak hour. We compared that to industry standard IT rates as well and that was almost identical to, to the, to the raw traffic counts.
Question? Let me just interrupt you on those counts, just so I can reconcile my mind. I think I heard testimony earlier that there could be about 50 new employees.
That's correct.
But we're only talking 17 trips or something like that during peak hour. Were most of these employees working graveyard shifts or something?
No, as, as I said, the existing counts is about every three employees, there's one trip. And that's just because they don't all come in and out during the peak hours. Some may come in a little bit earlier, some may come in a little bit later. So they're kind of spread out a little bit.
Sounds like most of them come off feet, because you only got, what, 93?
Mark, I can address that. The director, Harry Heller. DRS has a flex time program so that those employees are not all entering and exiting during the peak hour because of the flex time spread over a great period of time. The, the peak hour is a statistical analysis and it may vary from location to location. It's done on actual counts to determine what, when the peak occurs, both in the morning and the afternoon at that location. That's how they identify when that peak hour is. That, that's why the raw numbers are less than the total number of employees.
Mr. Chairman, another adjacent question to that is, is the flex plan, does it incorporate all five days of the business week or is there any constraints on, you know, Fridays you can't do it? I mean, because I'm, I'm just asking this because it might, I think it might affect the traffic counts.
It's vanilla through the week, isn't it?
It's all the days.
Thank you.
So again, 14 to 16 trips in the peak, peak period, it's going to have very little impact on existing traffic operations on South Street. With the proposed layout, Joe talked about it in pretty good detail, the south, south driveway is getting relocated about 165 feet to the south of where it is now.
I'm to Mr. Fortucci, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, this, that didn't settle too well on that explanation. Your 17 trips, did you just extrapolate that from your one and three or is there some definitive analysis that says of those 50 employees, actually only one and three are going to travel at the time?
Yeah, that's, that's their existing employee base.
So it's just extrapolation of existing employee?
That's right, but we also compare it to industry standard IT data for offices and manufacturing facilities and what that would project is almost identical to the extrapolation in these.
Your one and three?
Correct.
Off feet, I mean, on feet.
On feet, correct.
So this facility is different than everything else that's being generated on 53 for some unique reason, and that is?
Well, what, what other developments are you referring to? I mean?
We're talking about a peak hour on 53.
Every land use generates at a different rate, you know, retail is a certain generation rate, residential has a lower generation rate, office, R&amp;D, manufacturing, they all generate at different rates because of varying, varying needs for traffic. So that, that's what we use the IT manual for, everything has a different rate.
Current, right? Current?
No, they're using one continuous.
Well, hey, you didn't have that happen to you.
There is a recent one in the last three years. So the south site driveway is, is getting relocated 165 feet from its present location. So it's moving further away there from Wicksted Avenue. So this actually is an improvement because it has, we have some traffic, we have conflicts with turns here coming in and out of that road. Getting it further away from that intersection reduces those conflicts, provides for safer operation. We talked about how this driveway is going to be entrance only. With the northerly driveway now, we'll handle all of the exiting traffic and all of the entry and exiting truck traffic. So we're, we're relining that driveway, we're widening it a little bit and improving these curb returns here so that trucks and vehicles can turn into and out of that site more safely. Currently, this driveway is kind of right up on the property line and there is no radius. So it requires a, you know, a truck to turn out and kind of swing over the center line a little bit. So that's another improvement that provides for safer operation.
Questions to Captain?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From that, from that northern driveway, what's the sightline to the south? What's the sightline distance to the south?
The side.
Because, because over by where Michael's Cafe is, I know there's a pretty significant curve down there, but at least, since you can only add the entrance, so I'm going to go to the south by way, probably even be back to.
Yeah. It's currently 460 feet looking south. And then we're proposing clearing along the site frontage as part of the work that we have to do anyway. So after that clearing, the site distance improves to 680 feet. And that meets requirement for both cars and trucks.
Thank you.
So I just, we did do a capacity analysis at both driveways as well as the Shelter Rock Road intersection, just to look at the no build versus build condition, adding in our additional trips from the expansion. And there was no change in level of service for turns into the site from Route 53 and also no change in level of service at the Shelter Rock Road intersection. Now, the site distances, we talked about, we measured them in accordance with DOT criteria and the site distance looking both north and south from the northerly side drive will meet the DOT requirements after the clearing of the vegetation along the site frontage.
Mr. You have a question?
In your tracking analysis, what time period was that done? Roughly?
Yeah, the peak periods were 7:30 to...
Analysis from level of service and such like that, when did you come to those conclusions?
The same, the same periods. Yeah, 7:30 to 8:30 of the morning peak hour, 5:00 to 6:00.
When did your analysis occur?
Oh, it was July, 2011.
So that was before we changed the access and ingress on the southern drive?
Oh, yes.
So everything we're looking at in your traffic report assumes access and egress at both driveways?
That's correct.
Which is no longer true?
That needs to be revised.
Okay, then you're going to do that, right?
Absolutely. I mean, we just made this change as a result of comments received. These changes were just made...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're not listening to...
Yeah.
That's right. Because some of those movements are going to change based on the revised internal traffic design.
What I just mentioned was the entering traffic from 53 into the site, which actually does not change. So the left turns, which would, you know, could incur delays to Route 53 traffic, there's no issue with a lot of the service with the left turns in. And the Shelter Rock Road intersection won't change as well as a result of the change in driveway configuration. We did look at accident analysis for the latest three years of data provided by DOT and looking at the two existing driveway locations in those latest three years, there were no accidents reported that involved a vehicle turning into or out of either of those driveways. I did want to note that this application is currently also under review by the State Traffic Commission as the site previously did not have a certificate and it does meet the SDC thresholds for square footage and parking. The SDC has taken a preliminary look at that application and it's made some comments. They actually, these comments pretty much mirror the city traffic engineers' comments, which we can address, the southerly driveway with the ingress change. They also had requested that a bypass be provided on Route 53, South Street, in the southbound direction. And we're working on that design right now. Basically, we need to do a centerline restriking, possibly a small sliver widening on the west side of the road of one to two feet to accomplish that, but we feel we can do that. And after that bypass width is in there, we'll have 20 feet southbound, about 14 feet northbound. And that also ensures safety and operations on South Street and that when there's a vehicle waiting to turn left into the site through traffic, it'll continue to get around there and doesn't back traffic up towards Shelter Rock.
At month drives? At month drives?
This is just the northerly side driveway. And the reason it's just at the northerly is because most of the people coming from the north will turn into the northerly side driveway, or move to the south.
He also said that trucks would be smaller coming to the south.
That's right. And then one other item that we're working on, and actually recommended in our traffic study, was to improve, optimize signal timing at the Shelter Rock Road intersection. And we're working on a timing plan for that with EBDU and that would improve operations there as well.
Questions, Mr. Keller?
Hold on, hold on.
Questions, Mr. Keller?
Did you check the accidents at the Shelter Rock Road intersection as well?
Yeah, there were an average of nine accidents per year there. And we did look at those in a little bit more detail.
Because the traffic engineering had mentioned those.
Yeah, some of those are rear end, turning collisions that we normally see as part of a, you know, traffic signal at a semi urban intersection. But there were also a fair percentage of accidents resulting from all of the curb cuts in that area. There's a lot of private driveways and, you know, they're right up close to the signal and you get people coming in and turning there and getting, you know, T-bone angle type collision. So, you know, what you do there, it's difficult to do anything without some access management, which, you know, the city would have to come in and do something more regionally there to address a problem like that.
Mr. You have a question?
I just asked you, you were working with EBDU about the traffic light timing, is that a city traffic light or a state?
It's actually, it is a state road, it's actually a city signal.
Okay, so we're in control of that?
You are.
I know what happens when you want to turn to states.
We are in control.
So that, yeah, that's pretty much it. Just the conclusion of our study is that, you know, looking at the before and after with this expansion, we really have a very negative impact to existing traffic operations with the additional volume we're going to be generating from this expansion.
Any further questions? Go ahead, Joel.
If we're going to not have public hearing on this again until January after your clients had an opportunity to go through EIC, will the updated traffic analysis be prepared and distributed before that January?
Yes, absolutely. And we need to submit a bypass plan and turn analysis in the northerly driveway as well. So there's a couple of things we still need to do.
And we can give that electronically as well, right? Just like...
Yes.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Mark Fernandez from Ante Architecture, who is the designer of the project, just to go through the architecture with you, how it's going to be an asset to the South Street area.
For the record, my name is Mark Fernandez with Ante Architecture, located at 116 Chambers Street, New York, New York. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, this is basically a rendering of the building looking from this area towards the building that's there. And the shape of the building is basically based on the fact that we're constrained by the site and the setbacks that occur. So the building kind of steps out towards, kind of following the sightlines. And along with that, we're trying to keep everything to as minimal footprints as possible. So we are going with two stories and trying to maintain a lower slum kind of height so that most of the buildings are screened actually by the grade that occurs naturally at the site. So you won't be seeing a very much building vice from the location. And the actual finish of the building, what we were doing is trying to at least reference somewhat to the existing buildings, even though they've kind of been generated over multiple years of construction, we try to pick up some of the language of materiality in terms of the masonry that they're using there and also because it's a very long, long use of material, which will make the building stay beautified for a greater period. So in that vein, we have actually used a brick elements that kind of handle the corners and the areas of the building. And then around the window area, there's a kind of cast concrete, cast stone area that picks up some of the vertical line elements of the existing building. And again, we're using a similar window system that has a black wall system that picks up the windows on the existing facility. And then for the entrance area, we actually came down, stepped down and came out with the only one-story edition, which would have meeting areas for the facility. And that way, whenever it enters in, it's a little bit lower scale and the building steps back up to the main height of the whole facility. Other than that, just in terms of this image here, I'd like to note that some of the vegetation has actually been removed, so you can actually see the building. In real life, there'd be much more vegetation in there, that's literally Joe's plan here. So there would be even further screening of the building compared to what this rendering is showing in this report, just so you could actually see the building in this instance. That's really my commentary for the building. So if anyone has any questions, I can address those now.
Questions for Mr. Fernandez? Mission members, who's yours?
Earlier, it was mentioned that some of the trees will be taken out in order, I guess, to birth the sightlines built along the front. You've got pine trees in there now or...
Well, there's kind of a brush area that's existing here, I mean, the roof is part of the overall construction. The only good trees that are existing on the site now are kind of, they're up tight against the building or some kind of landscape.
Yes, I see.
Yeah, existing building.
And those are staying?
Those are staying and I believe they propose some additional landscaping elements, which I believe Joe had mentioned that we have to discuss with the setbacks and the sightlines.
Anything else from Mr. Fernandez this time? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Harry Keller, to answer this gentleman's question, I think if we look at two things. The aerial showing the existing vegetation along the frontage here and the sightline plan where the vehicle sitting 15 feet back from this intersection is going to be looking to the south. You can see where that sightline cuts across here. So there is some clearing of vegetation that is going to have to occur in this area here in order to obtain that 680 feet that Mark was talking about.
But the trees will stay.
We'll have to clear the vegetation.
Yeah, the vegetation up closer to the street.
Yeah, it's most trees, the trees are up by the building.
Yeah, the trees by the building, stay. Just one other thing I'd like to point out. Section 109 of your regulations requires that there be no net increase in site runoff as a result of the project, volumetric in peak flow for the 24-hour design storm, the 25-year, 24-hour design storm. We have submitted the stormwater runoff report into the record that shows that because of the detention retention, which has been designed into the project vernacular, we actually have a decrease in peak during each of the design storm events from the 2-up to the 100 year storm event. I don't know if it was part of the staff report, but we received a comment concerning there are some culverts under the railroad tracks that allow this wetland system to drain that are severely plugged. We're researching that right now to see whether or not we have any control or right with respect to those culverts. So that's something we can report back when we come back to you the next time.
Mr. Keller, is there any more significant impact of lighting in the parking lot and building compared to what there is now that neighbors across the street or anyone else would have to be dealing with?
That's a Joe Lanahan question.
Joe? Just curious about the impact of any additional lighting that might occur with regards to neighboring residential properties across the street.
Just a Lanahan for the record, civil engineer. Currently, the only sight lighting that we have are actually building mounted. And believe it or not, as secure a facility as it is, there is no parking lot lighting. In addition, we are not proposing any parking lot lighting. In fact, the only lighting that is proposed as part of the full expansion, they're not shown here, but there's just going to be wall packs that are basically going to be lighting up the facade here. There's going to be no proposed light pole within the parking lot. Basically, after the 12-hour shift, basically by night time, it shuts down. There's no lighting other than just straight light.
Generally, it's one check, not more?
Yes, just one check.
You retract it?
No. There would be a security issue. People walking around in front of us. True. In fact, I had gone through there just on the way to the meeting and I came to the back entrance there and we just have the lighting basically along the building itself.
Just kind of thinking to myself, you know, Connecticut in November is starting 4/20.
True. Well, it's also the fact that there are all residential houses on this side. So in fact, of not having any impact, including to the south as well, aside from the fact that there is the flooring chiropractor, there's actually residents in practice at that location.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of, Mr. Keller, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to introduce into the record a written extension authorization under section 8 of the statutes. I proposed an extension to the end of January. We have to go beyond.
I don't think we were given a handwritten before, were you?
I believe Attorney Marcus called in office giving a chance.
I don't know what your practice is, but any house that I practice in, they don't let me out of the room until I give you an extension.
And timely.
And they're often chased from down the last...
Mr. Chairman?
Attorney Keller, I just would like clarification, like a continuance of the December 2nd meeting. So you don't want any testimony at the December 2nd meeting? You want it at the next?
No schedule.
You want to be tabled?
I'd like to be tabled to your first January meeting.
That's fine.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. I just wanted a clarification.
I think it would just be wasting everyone's time to come and be someone.
No, agreed, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone else in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? You know, in favor? They might want to have a conversation.
My name is Al Dumont, D-U-M-O-N-T. I'm the facilities manager, the minimum health and safety manager. And I just like to say that over the last four years, we've been doing so much hiring that I have no space left in the building to put anybody. It's, we really need to expand and the company's been good to, you know, provide the funds to do this. And we've got some, a lot of very good paying, high-tech jobs and support staff as well. That's all, thank you.
Fair enough, thank you, Dumont, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Chairman? Motion to continue.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Attorney Keller mentioned at the beginning of his presentation, discussion of the perimeter, the continuous planting strip along South Street and the issue with the sidewalk. I ask that the commission allows staff to work that out with the applicant?
Absolutely.
And I'll certainly consult with the traffic engineer, construction services about the issue with the sidewalk and see, you know, and certainly a site visit always, you know, you get a better idea than looking at a topo map of the constraints out there.
Well, what we'd love to do is if we could schedule some kind of staff review, we could get all of your constituent consulting agencies together. Maybe we can meet on-site and then come back to City Hall and spend a half day and try to work on this.
Not quite half day, but it's a lot for us. We can discuss, yeah, we can discuss. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Yours, go ahead.
Something was mentioned there as related to sidewalks. This wouldn't be the first or, either way, whether we require sidewalks as per regulations or not, just because it's not currently continuous, other developments have to occur. So I would just caution or suggest that staff not make any commitments on that.
No, of course not. Of course not. Thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded to continue the public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Very many, I'll try and mine's all in favor, speaking right by saying aye. I oppose, this public hearing will be continued through January. Thank you, gentlemen. Hi, mission members. We do have one item under bold, this is a consideration of possible action shared with the... You looking for some guidance on the BEXC, RDA, EBA, and the same with the associates?
Yes, please.
Anybody want to jump in?
It's always Mr. Sj, I don't have a problem with this, but I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you.
I don't think he's concerned about the Beaver Dam.
Yeah. That sounded weird.
The Beaver Dam, the Beaver Dam, the town of the cautious. I think he cares the way he said Paul, I think.
All right, so there's your guys.
Thank you very much.
There's a couple of items in the new business commission, so you can look at those. And we will move unless there's anything else, we'll move right to referrals and turn it over to Sharon. Please.
That's very good. Okay, we are here tonight because we have several amendments to the zoning regs, you know, we go through them several times a year. And I think you all got Venice's memo dated, the tenth, and it kind of explains things in the brackets. I can walk through each one, we can talk about it if you want. I can go through it quickly, we can.
He's got several questions, so I'm gonna defer him first. And then I'll let everybody else jump in. So Joel, why don't you go ahead?
What'd you say? What follow the course?
You want me to just jump down the list and get rid of my questions?
Absolutely.
Sure, sure.
I'm working from the notes memo dated, the tenth, since that's kind of consolidated. Under section 2B definitions, barber shops, beauty parlor, any establishment for barbering, yada, 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 and it comes to, and skin care.
Right.
Well, does that include dermatologists?
No, that's a doctor, that's a, yeah, that's dermatologist, medical. It's like.
Long as there's clarity there.
Well, they're licensed physicians, not cosmo barbers or cosmetologists.
I don't think any dermatologist would want to go in under barber shop.
There would be somebody doing somebody's nails. I mean, what is.
Yeah, we have things that we don't.
I'm sorry, that's not something that I'm frequently accessing there.
Yeah, that, no, we didn't envision that. That's pretty, it's pretty basic, like your hair and your nail, you get a wrap and mushy thing.
Jump down to First Division.
Also page.
We're on page two.
Okay, page two?
Yep.
Of notes.
Yep.
A division of a lot into two lots. I just, I think I already answered my question, but First Division is still only defined as one lot into two lots, not a subdivision into three or four.
No.
Okay.
Same page.
Massage parlor was removed.
Yes.
Now, I understand later down in the definitions, it talks about massage therapy being okay in hospitals and various, as an ancillary practice. Does this change in effect, if you will, not allow masseuse to operate as a stand-alone business in this town anymore? If it is, this is, I think I've accepted.
No, massage ther, if you're licensed, if you're a massage therapist and you're doing work under chapter, you know, you've gotten your, that's right, yeah, as your license, you can, you can operate.
Okay, it is, it is right to me, the way it was read.
Joel, where is it? Note it again.
I have to work in all my zoning, did you go through each district and see if it was listed or not listed? I'm just asking whether or not.
The way it was, it was worded, and I have to jump down to where it's.
Joel's right. In other words, what Joel's saying is, the way it reads is, it's an accessory use to hospital, nursing home, medical clinic, medical office, health center, gymnasium, reducing salon, barber shop. So in other words, it's an accessory use, it can't be a primary use.
Primary use.
You might, no.
No, primary use.
Primary use.
Yeah, that's.
There's a masseuse across the street here, here at, that's been here for a couple of three decades. Used to use. And it's certainly not a burglar.
That's actually, that's the way it reads.
I understand your question. I have to see if it's, I have to see if it's individually listed in any other, in any zone as a specific use. Are only allowed as a.
Mr. Turner.
Health or beauty.
Mr. Keller.
No, I was just gonna say, based on what I'm reading there, like a place like, like take time, relaxation, that or something like that, you wouldn't be allowed to have someone. Because it's not accessory use to us.
Well, if.
Yeah, I have, I have to go back and check. I, I.
We'll look that, I don't know, this is a referral.
Yeah, it's a referral. You just go to check that whether or not, it may not be allowed today because.
Well, they're all over the town.
I know, but they're not going in as a, they're going in under one of the other permitted uses.
May or may not.
Well, I'm assuming they are.
Related, additional commercial regulation, section 5H on.
Which page?
I'm looking on page physically five.
What, 5H?
It's 5H.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
At the bottom of 5H4, it says clarifies that massage therapy can be an accessory use to other uses identified within certain limitations and zoning requirements. Again, since we just didn't change the definition of, get up here, we removed massage parlor, which is stand-alone masseuse in a legitimate business, forget about any windows and slime, we've removed that totally.
I get your question.
Yeah, in other words, only if you don't have, if it's an accessory use.
Yeah, I'll give you back an answer. The question is, this is a referral to the zoning commission, so you can always put that in your decision to the zoning commission. We have, we have a concern, paraphrasing for you, so you can, as an example, that if that was a permitted use, standalone permitted use, on whether or not it would be a permitted use and then clarify at the public hearing there, I can come back to you and tell you, but you can get an answer.
If we disagree with a referral, then I.
I understand.
At this point, have to give a negative.
Or condition.
And it's looping out.
Moving down from massage parlor to tanning salon, whose, I emphasize, principal uses to provide lighting and color system. I don't know how there's conflicts, but what I see around town is nail salons and tanning salons are often hand-in-hand as one operation. Does that, does this wording interfere with that at all?
No.
Okay.
You can have separate uses.
Moving down to the next page, oh, massage therapy, no, we've already talked about that. Lot tonnage and width, next page, 3H3, under flag lots.
Yep.
After the strike.
Yep.
It says regulations, in the case of a First Division flag lot, in RA 40, RA 20, RA 80, districts do not require planning and commit commission if all lots, if all lot width and accessories are met. Now, this is only First Division.
That's what it means.
And would those currently have to be come to us?
Yeah, if they're gonna do a flag lot, they gotta come to you. So nobody else has to come to you to do a first cut, so it's, yeah, it's a distinction. They'll do a first cut, anyone.
No, no, sure. Going down to page, says seven, page five, that can't be right.
You'd be the section maybe.
Section, oh, I was on it. 5H4, okay, that is weird. Next page, my word counts now. Section 8B, sub 2B.
8B, distance between driveways?
Distance between driveways, part B.
8B2. Yes. That's page six.
The last ad there is, the number of location of driveways in a lot shall be limited to that which is necessary for safe ingress and egress from the street as determined by the Department of Planning and Zoning for site plans and the planning commission for special exceptions respectively. The wording to me says that shall be limited to the safe, that we do not have the option if an applicant wants to come and say, the house down here on Deer Hill that, I forgot to get my glasses on, has a nice circular driveway, that's two driveways, two curb cuts. That would be not allowed if one is all that is necessary for safe access. Is that the correct assumption? That's the way it reads to me.
No, safe as determined by the Department of Planning, zoning, or the commission. If you feel that that's the best way to do it and it's still safe, that's fine. What we're trying to avoid is more curb cuts than, because we just want to do it that way. When we, you know, as an applicant, put standard and as the, we just want three, but we really only need two.
So my assumption is correct. If he wants to put a circular driveway and one is all that is necessary, and that's the word, necessary for safe ingress and egress, he's limiting one curb cut. He cannot put in a circular.
Words curb cut doesn't, isn't.
It's a drive.
It's limited to that necessary, safe egress as determined and egress from the street as determined by you. If you determine that two is still fine, two is fine.
Whatever we decide.
It just gives you the ability to make.
Gives us room.
I think it just gives you room. I think you're looking at it as.
It's not the way it reads to me.
Yeah.
Says shall be limited, period. That's very definitive, to which is necessary. And because we like the way.
Well, if you don't want them backing out on your, using your example, if you don't want somebody backing out into Deer Hill, then the circular would be.
Work fine.
Work fine. It would be necessary, so you would have to.
You'd have to say everybody on Deer Hill could, you know, should have, you know, circular driveway.
All right, we'll look.
I have an issue with that.
Okay.
Joint access, the words, on-site connection between adjacent lots shall be encouraged whenever feasible to limit the number of driveways. Does that actually mean anything? Shall be encouraged? There's no teeth in that.
You can't make somebody joint, you can't.
You're encouraging it, but it requires.
Why you made a part of regulation?
Because it's good, it's good planning to reduce the number of curb cuts if you and your neighbor both say, well, shit, well, I'll allow you to go through my parking lot and I'll just do one curb cut and you do one curb cut and we both have all this frontage, but they'll go in my site and have yours. We would encourage it if they do, if they want to do it.
I just don't, I think this.
And besides the fact that when you get to the Route 7 curb cut plan that's worked with Hepco just put out, there's a lot of discussion about, about joint access across properties.
I just think that's superfluous. It has been teeth. It's not really a regulation at all. It's a suggestion.
Anything else, Joel?
Yeah. In, going down to now which is page, section, joint access design, grades down to width. We're changing the width of a single family from 12 to 10 feet. What is that?
A width of the driveway?
Yep. What's the logic?
I don't know, we driveway's, one-way travel, 12. We are making the driveway widths consistent with what was in the subdivision regulations and.
I thought the subdivision regulations were changed at the same time this was, later on in the other memo.
We didn't do the subdivision regulations yet. We haven't changed ours.
We had a subdivision regulation, section.
The intent is for them to be consistent once the zoning commission goes through this process and decides. There were issues with driveway width with enforcement related and we tried to look at what was necessary to serve a single-family house, what was necessary to serve, you know, for one-way travel and for two-way travel and for single-family residences and for all other uses. And we tried to look at the problems that we were having out in the fields with a lot of lots that were pre-existing that didn't have correct driveway. So they were changed with input from zoning enforcement office and what we, what we thought made sense. And 12 feet on a single-family house.
I'm not gonna get too kind about that, it just seemed like we're changing that at the point. In sidewalks and other improvements, the addition of, that's 8B3, in the second paragraph, there's an addition. I'm curious as to what's the reasoning about lots containing furniture down the interstate other than a state highway, which seems to imply that we're not going to be requiring sidewalks on state highway coverage.
You don't control the right of way on the state.
We don't necessarily have to put it on the right of way.
No, but in practicality, and Jim can attest to this, that people come in and say, I'm not in a state road, you can't make me put a sidewalk in, as much as we might, you know, disagree at certain points, we don't have any regulation which gives us the authority to say you're putting, you must put a sidewalk in, not we, collectively, you and the department. So this gives us the ability to say to somebody, once we determine, whoever the we is, that a sidewalk's there, that we have a regulation that allows us to do it. What we get from applicants is, you, we can, there's no requirement because we're not on a state highway. End of story. You can't make, you can't.
Okay, do we have authority to put sidewalks on a state road? We just made an applicant put one in up along Newtown Road.
It's in, yeah, but in, along the, in the right of way, you don't. The state controls the right of way.
This is related to the right of way, though?
Well, yeah, I mean, the right of way in the property that has frontage along. The difference is a state road versus a local road.
Yeah, it seems like state highways are being excluded from our ability to require sidewalks.
It's, can I go ahead? Yeah. When the commission requests sidewalks or when staff requests sidewalks, that's all it is, is a request. We can't require it. It's up to the state. And even in DRS tonight, the commission can't say, we want sidewalks. The state can come through and say, no. The same with the Holly's on Newtown Road. If the state comes through and says, we don't want sidewalks, we are overruled. However, if it's a local road, we don't have the authority and we.
You're saying right now we can require sidewalks?
Right, no, right.
We can only, we can only use that as a bargaining chip.
When they come to the commission, there's other factors that come into play.
They can't, if, if, in the administrative review, all you have to do is comply with regs. They look at that first paragraph and they say, you can't make me put a sidewalk in.
And it's happened.
That's a legal condition.
Okay, now I understand. We're adding the requirement.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
It gives us more teeth and to get sidewalks within areas that don't have them.
Next section, 8B4, state highway approvals. Is that just saying we've got to approve this before they go to the T O T?
We just read worded it. Yeah, we had to change one thing.
All right, all right. And drop down to shared parking, which is 8C1, sub B. Parking facility serving primarily, primarily a nighttime or weekend use by special exception of the planning commission strictly, appoint finding. So you're moving that authority from the planning commission to the planning and zoning department.
Right.
Why?
Why? Because that's not a land use. It's, it has to do with a parking, a requirement, a parking requirement associated with a land use. Your, your, a special exception, right now, people come to you for a grant of special exception, which gets recorded on a land record and they go through this whole process for shared parking, nighttime, daytime. And sometimes that's the only reason they've become a special exception.
Because of the shared parking.
Because of the shared parking. But the shared parking isn't a, it's not a use. Parking is a requirement that's related to a use. It's calculated based on a use.
That's a departmental issue. We should end the public hearings on that sort of thing.
If that's all it does.
Yeah, that's, that's the only.
But if one wants, there's a special exception that comes before us and shared parking is a part of that, otherwise.
Yeah, you still have to view it as a little thing. It's just they wouldn't necessarily come to you to share parking, which people have done.
Which we just had with 64 West Street.
Yeah, exactly.
That's all I have.
Yeah.
Anything else, commission members? Again, go ahead.
The other thing that we got is dated earlier, I guess, subdivision.
Yeah, the subdivision's down to the bottom of that one.
It was 1011. I just, we just sent.
I just sent, I just sent, I just sent the, I just sent the... Yeah, he, yeah, we, he, he didn't do that.
You're saying that portion is not going?
Well, that portion is not a referral because that's not a zoning commission action, that's just an action that we're, that, that's something you control, they have nothing to do with subdivision regulations. The intent, yeah, I think it was attached as one document, I split them off, but when Dennis forwarded it to Joanna, they sent it.
Okay, so we're not getting any referral on the subdivision amendment?
They don't, there's no referral because that's your, your control of subdivision regulations.
I'm not gonna do anything on that tonight.
Just for clarity, the, our intent, staff's intent, is that after the public hearing on these amendments at the zoning commission next week, you'll, it'll be followed up with something for your December meeting for a public hearing for, for changes to the subdivision regulations, which is just something...
This is for future reference at all times.
All right, remember, folks, this is an eight B referral to the zoning commission, I'll entertain a motion for a positive or negative referral.
I'll make a motion for a positive referral with exception.
Okay.
Or petition, I guess it is.
Okay, we'll get that in a second. Motion made, I got a second?
Second.
Okay, and the condition, I know that you want a clarification regarding the X, the massage therapy, whether it's a primary...
That if, as long as a massage therapist can have a standalone, you know, primary practice...
Not necessarily as an accessory use.
Not as necessarily as an accessory, then without exception, but if, as I read it, that has now, would now be a non-permitted use or non-permitted business.
Okay, but you're saying is, we clarified that issue, accessory versus primary use before, so, so that's, that's what we're saying, we clarified that before they, codify that as a new, a new regulation.
Yeah, if, well, it's, it's, we need to be clarified that that use is still a permitted physical business in that, as a standalone property.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Here, no, that's a positive referral, by the way, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, this matter gets a positive referral. Our last one, eight two four referral, November two thousand eleven, city council agenda item six, request for renewal of sewer and water main extension approvals for twenty-five Reynolds Road, Sharon?
Well, twenty-five Reynolds Road is the one before thirty Reynolds Road that we talked about last week, remember, we said he handles a lot to get to his lot, this is the lot beforehand.
Motion has been made and seconded for positive referral, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, this matter gets a positive referral. Our last one, eight two four referral, November two thousand eleven, city council agenda item six, request for renewal of sewer and water main extension approvals for twenty-five Reynolds Road, Sharon?
Well, twenty-five Reynolds Road is the one before thirty Reynolds Road that we talked about last week, remember, we said he handles a lot to get to his lot, this is the lot beforehand.
Motion has been made and seconded for positive referral, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, this matter gets a positive referral. Motion with German?
I'll make a motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, meaning to German.
I see that.
Today, I'd like to speak to you about some home fire safety tips. As we move into the holiday season, there's a number of concerns that are raised for the regular use of decorations and concerns with extension cords, for example. I would please remind you that all extension cords must be plugged in to a single outlet and must be used properly. Overuse of extension cords, drawing too many things through one plug, can cause a house fire. In addition, use of decorations such as lights, wiring, decorative ornaments and such must be maintained in such a way that they are perfectly safe to use. Please inspect all such items before you hang them or use them for the holiday season. Check for wiring, check the plugs, be sure that all lights are securely seated in their sockets. Another concern for the fire service at this time of the year is the use of space heaters. Under Connecticut State statutes, space heaters are not allowed in multifamily homes, so if you live in an apartment house, please do not use a space heater. If you live in a single-family or two-family home and you elect to use a space heater, please be sure to read all manufacturer's suggested use and directions. At all times, do not place anything combustible anywhere close to these space heaters, they can get very warm and they do indeed cause fires. Do not use them for drying clothes or, in any case, put them too close to combustibles such as curtains or furniture. Another concern that we have is being sure that everyone has a working smoke detector on all levels of your home. These detectors need to be checked for use by battery or AC power. Please be sure that these are in good working order. Do not paint these or in any way cover them or disable them by removing their batteries, this is very important. With regards to smoke detectors, it is also important to remember that like any mechanical device, a smoke detector has a lifespan. If your smoke detectors are older than ten years old, the USFA, the United States Fire Administration, suggests that you replace the detector, take it out and dispose of it and purchase a new one. During the ten years, technology has changed so that the new detectors are far better, indeed, some of them have batteries that are five or ten years long and will not need maintenance. Please, check your smoke detectors. A final note that I'd like to make is, while you are out shopping and buying gifts, please be sure to check to make sure that you are not buying a gift that may cause a problem. Some gifts, as you know, can yield small parts and children, especially toddlers, tend to put a lot of these things into their mouths and they can cause a choking hazard. Please be very sure to check these items as you buy them for gifts for your family. When using candles during the holiday season, we recommend that candles only be used in an occupied room. When you go out, blow them out, don't leave a candle burning. As a final note, this coming season is going to be full of joy, family gatherings and get-togethers. We want you to have a safe and happy holiday season. Please remember that the Danbury Fire Department and our community risk reduction team is there to help you with information, pamphlets, or to help you decorate your home safely. Please be sure to give us a call at two zero three, seven nine six, one five five zero. Once again, Jeff Harold, the chief of the Danbury Fire Department, and all the men and women here, stand ready to serve and respond. However, the fewer times that we respond, the safer you are. Thank you very much.